I just don't, don't, I just don't understand, first of all, if, if the council file is specific to that neighborhood council, I don't know what getting two other neighborhood councils to endorse it, that's an additional burden that just has no relevance to me. If the council file is relative to a general issue, then certainly those other neighborhood councils that would have interest would be able to weigh in when the council file is heard by whatever committee it's heard by. I just don't know, even though my colleagues, several of my colleagues have mentioned that they, that we are required to get a second on an item, we are individuals, neighborhood councils are a body of, of, what's, what's the minimum size of a neighborhood council in terms of membership?
For residents, it's 20,000.
No, no, board members, the minimum size is maybe 11.
There's no limitation.
There's no limit, but, but typically there's at least nine, and many of them have 20 and more board members, and so I don't think asking them to get another 20 people to validate that is, is necessary. But I do think that because we are learning as we go, that we should cap this. We don't want one neighborhood council to take advantage of the opportunity and submit 100 neighborhood council files. And so I recommend that we limit it to three per neighborhood council. That would, over the course, three per, per calendar year, so over the course of the sun, of the pilot project, which is two years long, that would be a total of six per council, assuming there's 90 councils, there may be more, that would be less than 500, and I just can't imagine that every neighborhood council, I've heard many neighborhood councils tell me that they're not even interested in submitting files, so I think three is a reasonable number to test the process, and then we'll come back in two years and figure out if there's a better way to do it, and there probably will be, and, and I'm not suggesting that this is the perfect way, I think this is something we have to learn from. I would also ask that we instruct the city clerk, CLA, and Dunn to develop procedures and guidelines that would establish uniform submission process, a uniform submission process for neighborhood council files in order to begin May 1st, 2008. I would also add a sort of, as part of that, we should identify these as neighborhood council files, council files are identified as CFs, these would be identified as NCFs, and I think that would make it clear to everybody who submitted what. The, I think my colleagues, Mr. Zine and Ms. Hahn have been on record as saying that they have no problem with giving some authority to neighborhood councils to, to introduce files. The real question is what happens on the council floor, but also the devil's in the details, how we submit this to council. Mr. Zine?
Thank you, Chair, I just wanted to state I was delayed because of an EERC meeting that started at 8:00, that's why I'm delayed for this meeting, and I see our colleague Janice Hahn now approaching. I have a concern about the, I don't have any problem with the sunset clause, I think that two-year sunset clause is good, there is a concern I have about conflicts, certain neighborhood councils do have conflicts within the council itself, and I think that while you limit it to three, which is a good idea, as you mentioned, we have to have a second on any motion, and I think that since there are some issues with some neighborhood councils, some may be more assertive, aggressive, confrontational than others on issues, and if we don't want to support three for a filing, I think we should at least have that done by another neighborhood council, at least two for an issue that would come forward. I think that it could avoid abuse, it could avoid councils creating a problem that doesn't need to exist, and if I have a wonderful idea and I can't get a second in council, that motion doesn't go forward. And I think that if a neighborhood council has some problems, and we know some do have internal problems, at least they have to get another neighborhood council. If we don't want to have three, then I would recommend that we have at least another, have it two, as we have, a motion has to be seconded by one of our colleagues to get introduced. I think if we limit it to the three per year, it's a good idea, but I think if we let them do that without some kind of oversight, and some other councils supporting that recommendation, we could encounter a problem. What I'm trying to do is make it smooth, but somehow align it with reality, and I know clearly there are neighborhood councils who may want to just load the system up, others that don't want to load the system up, but to be fair to all of them, and to keep it in line, I would recommend, if you don't want three, I would support going to two, and everything else that you mentioned I would support, but I still think there has to be another neighborhood council that's going to support the motion that's going to be filed with the council. And for our colleague Janice Hahn.
I always have a concern when you use the word "reality," but...
Well, I know that some neighborhood councils deal with reality, and other neighborhood councils don't deal with reality, and some have such internal conflicts...
I think they're all very real.
Well, when we had to get Rabbi Freling to go to neighborhood councils to a certain number and to establish civility amongst neighborhood council members, that to me concerns me. It's supposed to be grassroots, people coming together in a unified prospect of the neighborhood. We all talk about change, but we want change for the positive, and I just think that to make this work for everyone's benefit, at least to get another neighborhood council to support the idea that's being moved forward by that one neighborhood council. I know we, at one time, Janice Hahn and myself, wanted to give neighborhood councils some binding power and authority, that was watered down, we want to give them the support, but we also deal with the aspect of certain neighborhood councils will abuse that, and to avoid that, I think if you have the second, you can avoid that situation, and if they can't get another neighborhood council to support their idea, or almost 90 neighborhood councils, then you would think there might be something wrong with it, and especially if you have a neighborhood council that has nine or eight people on their board. So that would be, I'd support everything you do, except I would say a minimum of two, that plus one other neighborhood council.
Right. Well, I, you know, I don't have a strong feeling on whether or not a neighborhood council needs to receive a second. I'm, I'm okay with whatever, you know, the, the will of the council is. I don't have a big issue on that. I think, you know, one of the things that hasn't happened, but I don't think it's, it's necessarily had an unintended consequence of being negative, is I think we actually thought neighborhood councils would have much more interaction with each other. I, I think the only times they were getting together is the Congress, or perhaps through the Alliance, but we kind of thought they would be communicating more with each other, particularly on big issues that were affecting the city, that they would be, you know, San Pedro would be lobbying, you know, Northridge on a, on a particular issue to say, hey, we need your council member to vote with our council, and that hasn't really happened as much as we thought, so I don't have a real sense that we have to get neighborhood councils to get another second for one of their proposed ideas for the city council. I also, I really think limiting it to two is a bit, I think that feels a little insulting. Okay, three, I, I thought I heard Dennis say two.
No, to get another neighborhood council, but the chair wants only three introduced per year.
Yeah, I mean, I was up for, I was willing to do five, I, I think, the fact that we're putting this as a pilot program for two years, to me, really mitigates almost any potential abuse that someone could think of. I'm really not worried about this, I really don't see neighborhood councils abusing this, I, I just am not fearful that somehow they're going to inundate, we've already heard from the city clerk's office that, you know, they're willing to, they're not going to be overrun with extra work, it's not going to be, I think, as a bit of a problem as people are fearing it to be, so I'm for more council files, and I'm not feeling strongly whether or not they need to get a, a second. It's a pilot program for crying out loud, let's try it, let's see how it works, you know, and if we need to tweak it in, in two years, we can.
Okay, what I would like to do is send a unanimous report to the city council. So...
So you're wanting to do three?
I want to send a unanimous report to the city council.
No, I mean, you want...
I agree, I agree with you, Ms. Hahn, that I don't think the ramifications of neighborhood councils doing council files is going to be that significant, I, I just don't think so.
I think just the opposite, I think we might get some pretty interesting ideas out there.
I think we might get some, some interesting ideas, but I think those interesting ideas would come to the city council even if we didn't do council files. At, at least when I meet with the neighborhood council, they're not shy about telling me what they think about different issues, but to formalize it and give them the council file, I think gives them a dose of respect that, that, that they deserve. At the same time, I'm concerned, we don't want to get, we don't want to, I would rather, it's easier to, to let the cows out of the barn slowly than it is to gather them all at once back, so I would rather start...
Are you equating neighborhood councils with cows?
Uh, no, only happy cows.
Happy cows.
But the...
California cows.
What I'm trying to say is that, that if, if there are, the, the sky is falling kind of, the possibility for the sky falling kind of projections that have been intimated by the, not only intimated, but stated by the opponents, then, you know, what's the harm in giving them three for two years, and if they, if it works out well, you know, we may blow the cap off, and, but if it doesn't work well, then we may tighten the strings a little bit more. It's, it's harder to tighten the strings than it is after a pilot project, than it is to, to do it now. We can always release it a little bit, but to have to come back and do it is going to be very difficult. It's easier for us to go from three to five...
I think that's fine, I just think if this, if it's any indication in terms of the community impact statements that have been coming, I mean, they just haven't, you know, we've not been inundated with those, so I'm not worried about this.
Well, I'm hoping, actually, I would like to see neighborhood councils use this process, but that they've been belabored with election issues, and, and bureaucratic issues, and defining issues, and, and one, and we have, the commission's report has allowed us to move a lot of clarification on all of those levels, so I think they can be more proactive on substantive things like council files. That's why I want to put a cap on this, because at the same time, we, we can't be driven by a thousand new council files that, that are never, I mean, I just don't think the council would be able to handle a thousand council files in one year, and, and then we would, then everybody would be upset because their council file isn't given priority, and the city clerk would have severe issues. So I think by limiting it to three is reasonable, I don't have a problem with going to two on the, to get a second for, for the purpose of building consensus, and then as we go into council, this committee can strength, stand strong in, in consensus and, and work with our colleagues to ensure that we can get this through them. That's the hardest step. So with that, if, if, if that's appropriate, would somebody like...
I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded, and that would be the order.
Everybody got it?
Any other...
No. Next item.
Okay, next item, number two, this is, I was wondering if we should go to item four first. Item number three, we were going to continue because the general manager is not available today, and that really is a discussion we'd like to have with her, her presence.
Item number four?
Item number four is, should be a brief item.
Yeah, it's a city attorney report and draft ordinance relative to amending the Los Angeles Administrative Code to create a Neighborhood Empowerment Trust Fund, and to grant authority to Dunn and neighborhood councils to accept gifts.
Yes, sir.
Good morning, Deputy City Attorney Darren Martinez.
Hi.
Let me give you an update, I guess, would you like a reminder where we are on this?
Yes.
The city council approved the majority of the provisions in the ordinance, and asked that there be a couple of revisions that, that we made to the ordinance. One was we increased the donor disclosure form requirement from $100 to $500. We created the trust fund where 10% of the monies would be deposited and then distributed to neighborhood councils in economically disadvantaged areas. We required the department to report to, within one year, on the, on the trust fund or how the program was working, and we also added a three-year sunset provision. The issue came back specifically to the committee for a consideration on the following issue. When the donor discloses something on the donor disclosure form, he's going to disclose whether he has a contract or permit, or has provided more than $500 in monies to the city. The question that we have to resolve, or that was left open, was what then would happen with that gift? Would it be a gift that could be accepted by the neighborhood council? Should it be accepted by another agency, and what is the process for accepting that gift? Initially, we had drafted it in such a way so that if the donor did make a disclosure on the donor disclosure form, it would then go to city council for consideration on whether the gift should be accepted or rejected, and that idea didn't seem to have a strong support at city council.
Any questions? Okay, we have one general comment card, Didiade, I hope I pronounced that correctly.
Thank you for the hearing. I'm from Venice, I am president emeritus, a position appointed through the bylaws. Apparently they wanted me to hang on for a while, because I've always been interested in this process. This issue before you now worries me. I don't understand enough about it, even to speak to other members of the board in Venice. In the past, there have been many abuses in many different localities with gifts, and as a consequence, I would like to see this lined out very, very carefully, and presented to all of the councils, because as you mentioned a little while ago, sometimes they come up with some very interesting ideas, and thank you for giving me this time and letting you know how I feel about it.
You're welcome.
We, we had quite a bit of discussion on this, actually, several discussions about, about this particular item, when we directed the city attorney to draft the ordinance. The, I think everybody agrees the ordinance is consistent with the direction that we, that this committee as a whole gave to the city attorney, and so I would ask for a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Zine moves, second to Brian Hahn, and I concur, that matter is approved. Thank you very much, good job.
Item number two?
Item number two...
Item number two is Neighborhood Council Review Commission's Recommendation Number 18 regarding the primary role of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment.
I thought we continued there. Mr. Kim?
We continued at, on 12/11, we, actually, we continued item number three on the library.
Oh, okay.
Item number two, we have, we have about half hour to discuss this item, so I'm going to ask Ms. Hahn to, you, you introduce this, this is relative to Recommendation 18, where Dunn shall have as his primary role, one that is facilitative, facilitative, and supportive of neighborhood councils. I don't, I don't know why this was, maybe the CLA can explain to us why he believes this was to be grouped into the controversial items.
That's pretty funny.
I, I find it...
That's pretty funny.
I find it very...
Bizarre.
Well, no, I find it very mundane that we asked that Dunn shall have as its primary role to be a facilitator and, and be supportive of neighborhood councils, I think.
But also, it says, city attorney advises this recommendation modifies the role of Dunn, it may require amendments to the Neighborhood Council Ordinance and Plan.
Well, that's, that's what I want to get clarification, why did the CLA think this was a controversial item?
Because the city, in, in our discussion with the city attorney, they thought that the Neighborhood Council Ordinance might, might need to be amended as well as a plan, so we thought we should have some discussion on it in committee.
Did, what, and, and the ordinance should be changed in what respect? What, where, does the ordinance say that it should not be supportive and...
No, let me see if I can assist, one point extra, city attorney, I didn't, of course, identify this as controversial, but when we were evaluating what the duties of the department were, there were some duties that could arguably depend upon the intent of the city council, could be treated as more regulatory duties as opposed to purely supportive duties.
Right.
And that, and one example is that Dunn has a very significant role in evaluating and resolving complaints.
Right.
So that would be something that we would need to think about, whether that is still part of their supportive and assistance role, or is it more of an enforcement role?
Okay, so, so you're saying, in your opinion, there's a distinction between a regulatory responsibility and a support responsibility? I mean, I think it's...
One could argue that.
For example, I think it's LAPD's job to be supportive of the community.
True. However, in the context of what I understand, the criticisms or concerns about the department were that they were taking role more of a enforcer rather than the supporter, that's my perception, it's not a legal analysis, but I just raised the issue, it may be that the city council concludes that they can perform these dual roles, and therefore no plan amendments are, are necessary. So that's just, I think that just the dialogue and the discussion needs to...
Mr. Kim, have you ever had any discussions on this?
Well, I think...
You yourself is supportive of neighborhood councils?
Oh, yes, I see the department as primarily supportive and facilitative, and focused on capacity building.
Do you think this, this language in any way undercuts your regulatory authority?
No, I don't think so. I think the additional recommendation of the NCRC for the regional grievance system would help address the situation that the department is in the position of resolving complaints, because we get, as you also get, many complaints about neighborhood councils, and there is an expectation that we do something. So I think if we can establish a regional grievance system, which is primarily a jury of peers, that would go a long way towards filling that vacuum that is created.
But this recommendation number 18 in and of itself is, is if anything, maybe a little ambiguous. Would it be helpful to the city attorney if we said Dunn shall have as its primary role, one that is facilitative, faciliti, I'll never be able to get this...
Facilitative.
Facilitative, regulatory and supportive?
That would be helpful, right, if that's the intent. Another example, that, one of the key responsibilities of the department in Article 7 of the plan is that at a minimum, the department shall, I'll quote, "implement and oversee compliance with city ordinances and regulations relating to a citywide system of neighborhood councils", unquote, which is certainly not inappropriate, but I just want to make sure that we understand what needs to stay in the plan and what needs not to, so that I could, when I make these plan amendments, I know what the intent of council is.
Would the department have any problem with that?
No, we would not.
I mean, the word regulatory, would the commission, do you think the commission would have any...
Yeah, yeah, and I have a problem with it, I, I have a problem with it. I mean, and this, I mean, for me, this was really key to what, since I was chair of, of this committee, I probably heard more complaints about the department than I heard about individual neighborhood councils, and a lot of it was the feeling that they were more policing neighborhood councils, as opposed to being supportive. I mean, I always thought the name, Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, should have given them their charge, their mission, their, their, their roadmap, but in reality, that's not what happened, and it became more of a policing, particularly under one of the interim general managers, and it was just, it was really a kind of a hammer that began to, to make itself apparent in neighborhood council meetings, and, and how they did elections, I think taking elections away will, will solve some of that, but I don't really like putting the word regulatory in here, because I think that's what we're trying to get away from with Dunn, and then we're, you're going to have to tell me how some of those functions get performed if Dunn doesn't perform them.
Good, that's the next question, thank you.
Jason Lyon, Neighborhood Council Review Commission, I think it does go counter to the intent of the commission, because I think we clearly stated that what we were trying to create was a department that could really pay attention to supporting and facilitating, and insofar as there needed to be a policing function, that it would go under the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners, clearly, so that any, anything that was disciplinary really should go to the board and through a public process, which to date, we haven't had, which is also...
Didn't you say that in your recommendation?
We did, that's, as, as we've always tried to say, all 73 recommendations are apiece, that's why, and so, very clearly, we tried to address where discipline gets dealt with, where complaints get dealt with.
Where is that recommendation?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, complaints get dealt with, and discipline, both of those get dealt with under the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners and through the regional grievance process.
What recommendation?
Um...
And did we already pass that?
What did you do, I don't know about the regional grievance process, but it, that's the way, really, the system for handling complaints inside the system, either against a council or against the department.
Right, right.
That is true, and we need to reconcile those recommendations with the existing plan language and the ordinance language, which clearly provides that Dunn would be also handling those complaints. So, once the regional grievance system is established, we have to figure out is Dunn completely out of that business, with respect to that is also the desertification process.
Do you even have staff?
They do, but part of our recommendation was that they would need, we, we assume that they might need more.
And that would be one of the issues in terms of implementation side, because the Bonk does, has one full-time commission executive assistant, the Bonk would primarily rely on the advanced work of the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment, so we, you can't completely separate the department from the disciplinary process, because we're going to have to do the due diligence upon which the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners will ultimately make some decisions.
Not necessarily, not if we concur 100% with what the commission is recommending, because...
For the regional grievance system.
I think that's consistent with our recommendation.
We could move bodies to the commission to have that function, the distinction is that the Board of Neighborhood Commissioners are neighborhood council members, who would be sort of a appeal process to be judged by their peers, as opposed to a bureaucracy that would make decisions on behalf of the mayor and the city council, so it's quite a distinction, and I, I'm not, it's not lost on me, and if, if in fact, but I, I have to tell you, on the other hand, I've found that Bonk has been very reasonable, in my experience, on, on issues like this, so it may, may not be a function you want.
What's that mean?
So what exactly are we talking about here? Before, before I want to even decide on this, I want to know, so we're primarily, the regulatory responsibilities, what are them?
Okay, I think that might be helpful, I, we may need to report back in greater detail, but on the top of my head, we have one, the funding program is a significant regulatory responsibility of the department, it administers and implements it, if there are problems with misuse of funds, those are handled through the department. The desertification, so the funding program is one of them, the desertification process is one of them, because Dunn is the agency that initiates desertification for violations of the plan, and before the Dunn, currently under the plan, before Dunn can initiate desertification, it must resolve all the complaints that are filed against a neighborhood council. So somehow, we're going to have to work that arrangement out with this grievance process as well. So those are, those are two significant regulatory duties, just off the top of my head.
Was there any discussion in the 9, that 12 review on having the controller? As we did take the city clerk we gave our elections to, was there any discussion on the controller, particularly in this auditing the, the funds or misuse of funds, and what was that discussion like?
There was a pretty extensive discussion about taking it to the controller, and the staff report suggested not, and suggested that the, both departments didn't feel like it would be such a great fit to take...
Wait, the city controller has authority over whatever they choose, I mean...
Yes, but...
Any, any city function, they have the authority to, to audit, as, as I would understand.
And they have already done so, certainly, but auditing the department and actually evaluating...
Not the department so much, but the individual neighborhood councils and their, their use of their 50,000, that discussion, did that happen?
Yes, and my sense from, I'd have to call the staff report up again, but my sense was that they felt like it would be finally too tedious a, a job to go through all 90, item by item, and that probably it was, it was more suited for the department to have a fiscal manager, and so I thought that was completely consistent with our recommendation, that that...
It would be similar to the Community Development Department, the Record and Parks Department, the mayor's office, and how they manage grants, they have a monitoring function, they keep track of stuff, if there's a problem, then you can call in the controller to do an audit. But most of those grants have audit provisions assigned to them, in other words, a community-based organization gets a grant, they are required to have an outside independent audit as part of the function typically. In this case, we have no outside independent auditor, and I don't think that's a function for Dunn. They should do the monitoring of, of each of these programs as if they received a $50,000 grant, and within the context of the guidelines that are provided to them, that make sure that, that they're in alignment, the expenditures are in alignment with, with the intent, but...
are in alignment with the intent. But, but, but we have no independent auditing function. The city controller does have the authority to go into specific units if they choose. If somebody makes a complaint about a particular neighborhood council, the city controller could, could then agree to go in and audit a particular neighborhood council. I would assume, without any other provisions, that Bonk or the department could ask the city controller to audit a particular unit of the, of the system.
The current practice for the department is to conduct quarterly audits of each neighborhood council's use of funds, and the controller conducts periodic audits, checking up on our audits. So there is a current practice that, from my perspective, is, seems to be working fine. It's not highly problematic. It's an appropriate, I feel it's an appropriate role for the department. The controller's checks and balances and administrative procedures, I would, based upon what they require us to do, I would think would be highly difficult, both from the controller's perspective, as well as the neighborhood council's ability to meet the paperwork requirements that the controller requires.
I don't, I don't see that as really part of the regulatory function. I just see that as part of the monitoring function and facilitating function. What, when you talk about regulatory function, what exactly are we speaking of?
I suppose my understanding is that if you have, Dunn has the ability to impose corrective measures or remedies for problems that are perceived, either violation of the plan or the, or the financial assistance, technical assistance policy, they're, they're regulating the role of the, of the neighborhood councils.
So without the, without Bonk's approval?
Correct, because Bonk is an advisory body. It doesn't manage the department. The department, the general manager manages the department. So within that, within this neighborhood council system, yes, they're supportive and they provide assistance, but there are times when they need to regulate the activities of the department because, of the neighborhood councils, because we've given them that responsibility in the plan and the ordinance, primarily with, again, the funding program.
Okay, you, you've observed this for a number of years.
I have.
And so what, is there a recommendation that you could see as how this, would we say that Dunn would be the initiator of regulatory action, but that Bonk would be the deciding authority?
No, we, that would require significant changes probably to the, to the city charter.
So you like it in Dunn?
Well, I think-
Now, we just passed, we just passed recommendation, let me, before you answer, let me say, we just passed recommendation 22, which gave, which directs us to give Bonk more authority. And we, but it's undefined.
That's exactly the point. It is undefined. And so therefore, because it's undefined, we have to identify what those powers are going to be, consistent with the city charter and the plan and the ordinance.
Yeah, what it says-
That's why we have to have this dialogue, because-
Yeah. The city council has approved recommendation number 22. The role of Bonk shall be clarified and expanded. The role of Bonk is defined as policy and rulemaking, regulatory and disciplinary body.
Correct. Now, from what I gather from the current NCRC recommendations, the term dislittatory and regulatory speaks to Bonk acting as an appellate body in the grievance process, and we can make those changes.
Yeah, but you know, all we're doing here is we're saying that Dunn shall have as its primary role, one that is facilitative and supportive to neighborhood councils. I don't think passing this recommendation is mutually exclusive to these other things. I think what it does is once again sets the tone, sets the roadmap, sets the, the, you know, decision of the policymakers in the city that we want Dunn to be as its primary goal, supporting neighborhood councils. The cheerleader, the advocate, and I don't think by passing this, it in any way says that it can't, I don't think it need, there needs to be an ordinance change. I, I don't. I think what this does is just shout it out. Come, you know, Dunn, go back to being, your main goal is to support neighborhood councils, work with them, be their cheerleader. You come to the council and ask for stuff for them. You, you know, go up against other general managers and say, "Wait a minute, DWP, you're violating this," or, "Come on, you guys, planning, you're supposed to," that's how I see Dunn. You, as the, as the general manager, and I don't think that happens a lot in the city family, but go on up against other general managers and go, "Look, we got a system of neighborhood councils in this city, and you can't ignore them any longer, and you can't be doing business the way you used to do, and you need to have planners that'll go out to their meetings." That's what I think this means. Don't think it means you can't do all that other stuff. It gets back to, your primary function is supporting, empowering, doing whatever you can, being in the face of the city council, in the face of the mayor, saying, "Neighborhood councils are alive and well. What are we all doing to make them work?"
Yeah, I, that gets back to my original point. I never saw, I didn't see this as controversial whatsoever. I just saw it as-
Don't think it needs to change.
Fairly rudimentary. But the clarification is necessary, and I do think we need an ordinance to define Bonk's role, because we, while we-
That's the issue.
We passed recommendation 22. We didn't define what that means, and-
Passing this does not require an ordinance change.
And given that we are going to pass this, we ought to get some clarification.
But item number 22 is not before us today, so we don't need to have a-
No, but I, I don't think that we can talk about this item, given the nature, in fact, in the, in the report from, from the commission, they actually say that they, that this was done because they didn't want the focus to be on, while they recognize that there were, what is the language? Bonk supports the suggestions on how Dunn can improve its ability to assist neighborhood councils be more functional, rewarding participants. Under the charter, Dunn was given regulatory oversight functions that would work in conjunction with broader mandate, provide a variety of support services. So, so apparently, the charter-
I know that, yeah.
-allocates certain regulatory authority to Dunn. That we're not going to change. We're not going to go back to the voters. But there does need to be, I think, a clarification as to who has what responsibility.
Right, right. And we're going to be having those conversations with the department and bring the reports back to city.
And I would just add that it may be easier to view that issue in the context of this regional grievance model, and that you may want to time it such that you can view the Bonk's role in the context of the regional grievance model, because they go together, as I believe the commission intended.
Why do we call it regional grievance model? Why don't we just say grievance model?
Because the model presented by the commission is regional bodies of neighborhood council leaders resolving complaints on a regional level, not citywide.
Hmm.
So that's the homework that we have to do in terms of getting that to you.
I just don't see the difficulty in this.
No. I just think, I bet it's an important distinction that we make as we go forward with neighborhood councils.
Ms. Hahn moves, and Mr. Zine second.
With enthusiasm, I move.
Recommendation number 18, I concur.
Sis Boomba.
And that matter, no public comment.
Yeah, be a cheerleader.
That matter is approved. That, I think, is all our business for today.
Okay.
Great job.
Is there any general comment?
Better job.
Okay, good.